All right, everyone, the hour of 6:00 PM, having come and gone, is 6:02. We'd like to call the meeting of the City Council. All right, now we're ready. All right, everyone, we'd like to call the meeting of the City Council to order at 6:03 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? At this time, we'd like to invite Pastor Stokes up to start us off with prayer.
Good evening. Let us pray. Father, we thank you tonight for the opportunity and privilege to come before your throne of grace, to obtain help, mercy, and favor in a time of need. We thank you, Lord God, that your eyes are upon this city as you view her restoration, and we thank you for every leader in this room tonight. We thank you for the spirit of wisdom and counsel. We thank you for the spirit of collaboration that rests in each leader in this room. We thank you, oh God, for the residents, how you have kept them, how you have kept them safe from harm and danger. We thank you as this city looks ahead to see renewal and revival, and we give you glory for the things that are about to take place. We thank you tonight for a spirit of unity that's in this room, and we give you praise in advance in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. We're at the point of public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to comment on any items on the agenda tonight? Is there anyone who'd like to comment on any items on the agenda tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Nikisha Jones. I'm a longtime resident of Calumet City. I grew up in the 6th Ward, own a home in the 7th Ward. I'm here tonight because the block that I live on, it needs help. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with the apartments that are on Sidley and Buffalo, but it's getting to be out there. The people who congregate by those apartments, we need to have somebody come there and shut it down. If it's the landlord, something needs to be done. Another reason why I'm here is because two weeks ago, I'm not sure if you guys are aware of what happened two weeks ago, but two weeks ago, it was a chase on that block. There was children out there, there was senior citizens out there, and it was a chase with one car and several police cars. Again, there were children, I have children. They came down that block chasing the vehicle. The vehicle then hit a car that was parked, hit another car, which happened to be my car. Then the car that was being chased hit our car on the side. The person then hit another car. The police then came out of the vehicles with huge guns screaming and yelling at the person in that car. It's upsetting because, again, there were children there and adults that were there, that were older, elderly people that were there. So that's an issue. It was like no regard to who was there or anything. The block was shut down for two hours. I understand things happen, but it's the way that we do things. So I wanted to come here tonight to let it be known, I'm not sure if you guys know what happened, and then you go onto the, the police officer gave us a paper that had the case on there. They stated, oh, you'll have it in three days. Then I go on to try to locate, it happened June 30th, that was the date. You go on the website, it's not there. It's been two weeks, two weeks, and it's still not there. It's like, why? What's the issue? Are we trying to hide something? There was nothing done. I called the police, the police department, all the officer that was over the case, he works the night shift from 10:00 to whatever. Okay, so I'm supposed to, I guess, call him at 10:00 PM to see if he's able to figure out if he can approve the police report. So that's why I'm here, because initially, my concern was those apartments, the slumlord, you know, and then now, all of a sudden, now this happens two weeks ago, and it's affecting my family. So to me, it's getting a little bit too close to home for me. Okay, so this is all I wanted to say, I wanted to just come here and get it all out because it's becoming to be a very big problem in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Ma'am, if you could see Chief Black in the back and Deanne, if you can go and get her information as well, so we can address the matter. Thank you for... Is there anyone else who would like to address the City Council during public forum? If not, we'll move on to the next item. With the council's indulgence, we have members from the Small Business Association here in accordance with the announcement made by Governor Pritzker and the federal administration. They're here tonight to talk about the assistance that we're providing to the residents of Park River Oaks. So Val, if you want to bring them up and introduce them. They do have packets tonight for the City Council, and they will describe, they'll be at Park River Oaks until July 21st, so we're doing outreach, and they're here tonight to provide more information.
Just a quick introduction. As you know, the mayor spoke with the governor about declaring the park, the park area, the park condominiums, as a disaster declaration. This resulted in the program that they're going to present to you today whereby those that were impacted over there will be able to get some assistance.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Janelle Finley. I'm the Public Affairs Specialist for the U.S. Small Business Officer Disaster Assisted. My home office is Atlanta, Georgia. That's where I reside, and that's where my home major office is. Tonight, this is my colleague, Ms. Yang Elliott. We both have been deployed here to the great state of Illinois to work with the residents and businesses for the Calumet City Apartment Complex Fire. We now have a disaster loan outreach center that was opened up on Friday, the 8th of July, at the Clubhouse. It was opened up for disaster assisting, supporting, and helping all the residents that was displaced for the damage, the fire damage. Our agency, SBA, is not only an agency that works with small businesses, we work with residents, we work with nonprofits, we work with homeowners, and we do the non-disaster for, for the non-disasters for areas that have been natural disasters, that's why I wanted to say natural disaster. I have a little notes that they give us that we can read that can help us, so we can make sure we're getting the information out correctly. And if you don't mind, I don't mind reading a little bit of, from my notes to make sure you are getting the correct information. So Small Business Administration, we are an agency that offers low-interest loans to disaster victims that have been displaced for a natural disaster. Our interest rate for, as of this disaster for the Calumet City Apartment Fire, our interest rate is a low 1.68% six rate for our homeowners and our renters. Our businesses is a 2.935% for our businesses of all kinds, smaller, all kinds, and we have a 1.875% for nonprofit organizations, that covers our churches. They are initial deferment, they have initial deferment for this disaster declaration, and it's for the first payment within five months from the date of the first note. And I have all this information in a packet for each one of our council members, so if, when you leave, if you want to look at it individually and read it, that's fine. Also, we have the website where individuals can go on their website, and they can apply for the low-interest loan for disaster. Right now, we're trying to get the information out for everyone to go to our disaster loan outreach center, the one at the Clubhouse. And right now, the reason we want them to come there is they can get the face-to-face individual assistance for client with their application. So even if they just need information, they can go there and get individual information. Now, our loans, like I said, they are fixed up to 30 years, and if the applicant put in a loan and they get approved, they're not obligated to take the loan. If they change their mind, they don't want it, they're not obligated to take the loan. We also encourage them after they decide not to take it, we encourage them to, after five to six months, if they decided they do want to get the loan, only thing they have to do is submit a letter of consideration back to SBA, and they can activate their loan and start it back up. Also, I wanted to mention about our online, we have a customer, 24-hour customer service. Their number is 1-800-659-2955. Our customer service is there seven days a week to answer any questions that the applicants may have, or if they just want to put in an application, they can that way. But they're mainly there to answer any questions they have about their loan that they might have already submitted. I'm not sure if everyone knows the address, but the disaster loan center address, location is the Park River Oaks HOA at the Clubhouse and at 150 Park Avenue, Calumet City. Our hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. We open on Saturday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and we're closed on Sunday. Disaster Loan Center is only going to be here for another week or so. They're closing permanently on Thursday, July 21st, at 4:00 PM, but you can still, you can still do applications online. You can go to our website anytime up to September 6, 2023, and put in an application. And that's for our physical damage, if they have physical damage. Now, we do have a different date for our businesses if they are applying to economical injury. Then our date for the economical injury loans are April the 5th, 2023. So there's a lot of information that is out there for anybody who needs assistance. And we always tell them to do the face-to-face at the Disaster Loan Center, but if they don't want to, they can always call that 1-800 number, or they can go on our website, Or if they just want to do the application online, then they can go to our website where it's listed for the application, for our ELAs, Electronic Loan Applications, that they can just do from home if they don't want to come to the center. I do have some information about the HOA, but I don't want to talk too long because I know you've got a lot of other business to bring up tonight. Do you have anything you want to add to?
Before I say anything, I really want to say this. Our hearts go to those who are affected in this devastating disaster. I like what the mayor has already posted on the website. When one triumphs, everyone triumphs. When one is suffering, everyone is suffering. I'm not a law officer, there might be questions I cannot address, but I want to convey one single message, that we are here, we're ready to help. One question that we have been asked many times, why we should take a SBA loan, the question can be answered as simple as this. This is a federal government law. There's no cost applied, and there is no closing fee. There is no obligation to take it. If you consider later you don't want it, it's totally fine. And if you want to repay in advance, there's no fine. So I would say this loan is really helpful if you consider it as an opportunity, as a chance. And just as my lead just mentioned, that right now, we have the disaster center right here. So please take advantage of this chance. We have the representatives right here. We have, not we, I think our representatives, they have the passion, they have the expertise, and they have the really knowledge to help. If there's anything that we can do, we will really try our best to have your concerns addressed. Again, we are here, and we can get through this all together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One of the members in the back, if you don't want to have any questions, they want to meet with us?
Yes, any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, we have Representative some HB Taylor, Val. We have a matter item, I believe 15, on the agenda under resolution. So if you can come up briefly.
Good evening once again, Council. Some of you may remember Chuck, he represents HB Taylor, and some of you may have met the owner. We have reviewed, their facility is absolutely awesome. On the agenda tonight is an agreement to convey 800 Riverside Drive, I won't say the nickname, but 800 Riverside Drive, for the purpose of expansion and further redevelopment of this particular organization. I'll turn it over to Chuck, he can explain what they do and what their proposed obligation will be.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Ruddy. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for HB Taylor. We came to Calumet City just under six years ago and purchased the property at 100 Riverside Drive. At the time, it was an older warehouse. We sunk, we spent several million dollars bringing that facility up to really a state-of-the-art manufacturing and warehousing facility. We sell food additives and flavors into the food system, and we sell all over the United States. We need additional space here in Calumet City, so we're asking the City Council to approve the contract so that we can take the older property at 800 Riverside and improve that. Our intent is to make another multiple-million-dollar investment there, bring the building up to habitable status, and then add an addition to it so that we can continue to manufacture and store ingredients at that facility and use it in conjunction with the facility at 100 Riverside.
Thank you, Chuck. Does any alderman have any questions? No, thank you. All right, continuing on the agenda, item five on the agenda, approval of minutes. The minutes will be at the next City Council meeting. Item six, reports of standing committees. Finance, Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Before me tonight, I have a list of dates. We're getting ready to start our budget review and discussions. I have a list of dates, most of the council has received these dates. I know Alderman Navarrete may not have them, but I'm just going to read them for the record. We're going to have a meeting Monday, July 18, 2022. Tuesday, we're going to be looking at July 19, 2022. Wednesday, July 20, 2022. Monday, July 25, 2022. Wednesday, July 27, we're going to have a public hearing right here in the council chambers, 6 o'clock, and the passage of the budget, 23 fiscal budget. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Safety, Alderman Williams.
Nothing at this time, man, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Utilities, Alderman Patton. Thank you, Alderman. Ordinances and Resolutions, Alderman Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. The Ordinances and Resolutions Committee will be calling a committee meeting sometime next week or the next two weeks in conjunction with Alderman Gardner. I'll get that information to everybody once the time is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Health, Education, Welfare, Alderwoman Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. The Health, Education, and Welfare Committee will be coming to a meeting at the first available date of August, two agenda items, protocol of disaster, as well as mental health. The uptick of suicides by purchase bonders, I would like to convene members of our purchase bonders departments, as well as the chiefs of both departments, to see how we allow our men and women, the bullies and fighters, to be confronts, seeing as though their overtime rate has significantly increased. And let's allow the purchase bonders to have time for these and serious level of accountability. August 13, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, I will host along with five boards, and the Committee for Health, Education, and Welfare, Back to School Fair, is held at Memorial Park, 6 Wells Worth Avenue, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. You can go to AldermanWilson.com to register for the fair, that's AldermanWilson.com. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Alderman. Permits and Licensing, Alderman Smith.
Yes, Permits and License Committee will be calling a meeting at the first available date, once confirmed for chambers availability. We will be discussing current as well as upcoming license applications, along with status.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Works, Alderman Navarrete.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, I want to touch on financial item 37 on today's agenda, for the council's, ask for the council's support on this item. This is the first step in collecting bids for vehicles for public works, such as leaf, vac trucks, snow plows, and street sweepers. As we all know from previous meetings, the public works is in need of these items. We have an idea of cost, but we'll not know exact amounts until we pass a motion to utilize the state bid process for quotes. Once we receive these quotes, we will review the pricings and bring it back to the council for consideration. So this is not an approval of any amount, but approval, a necessary step in obtaining bids for equipment for public works. So just ask for the council's support on item 37 under Financial Matters. That's all this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. City Council Reports, Alderman Navarrete.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, I believe it was, CMAP had an event recently here in the chambers, a planning event that encompasses the 1st and 5th Ward. It was not very well attended. We, 1st Ward will be working with Alderman Gardner and the 5th Ward, the study area covers those areas, so we're hoping to have an additional meeting to get more participation from residents, so just look for that date to come soon. That's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman Wilson.
Thank you. And let's see. The tree list, I have submitted the tree list again to Public Works. I would like for it to go on record that we are still looking for someone to look at trees for removal at 400 Hoxie, 599 Calhoun, 519 Calhoun, 644 Exchange, 408 Saginaw, 525 Muskegon, and 562 Marquette. Those have been emailed again to Public Works. It is now on the record for the minutes for this meeting, so the request has been made. Speed bumps, I am told, are here, but the machine to put them down is not working. So we wait until we have all of the working parts, so we can slow down the traffic in our ward. First, second ward meetings will be held the first Wednesday of every month at the Public Safety Training Center on 24th State Street in Calumet City. The second ward meetings will be held the first Wednesday of every month, and that will begin in August. I am also asking residents of the second ward to come out and represent our ward in the citywide Back to School Fair on August 13. You can volunteer by texting me or emailing me, 708-586-4990, 708-586-4990. Thank you to those who have called and already volunteered. As you know, some of you have already met and spoken with one of my assistants, Marie Rivera. She will be answering most of the text messages during the day. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. As Alderman Wilson stated, there is a delay on the speed bumps, so letting the third ward residents know that once we get those items, we will be installing the last speed bumps from the list that was given to the folks at the last town hall meeting. Speaking of town hall meeting, the next town hall meeting is August 1, 6:30 at Downey Park. That's the 3rd and 4th Ward Town Hall Meeting. We look forward to having everybody back after missing the July meeting because of the holiday. And lastly, the 3rd and 4th Ward Sixth Annual Back to School Picnic is August 13, from noon to 4:00 at Downey Park. That's 300 Jeffrey. We're still on the planning committee and kind of putting the committee, putting it together. If any residents want to volunteer, they can call my office at 708-891-8193. We look forward to having another good event. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson, Williams. These W's, man, I'm sorry.
Thank you. First and not a guy that makes all things possible. I want to thank the residents of Stonegate that came out to their homeowners association meeting. Your complaints were documented, and those requests have been submitted, or will be submitted sometime shortly. Want to also thank Public Works for their expeditious response to some of the residents' complaints at Stonegate. They actually jumped into action and took care of some of their matters right then and there, after hours, and probably did not get paid for it, so I appreciate that. The picnic, 3rd and 4th Ward picnic, like Alderman Tillman stated, the 13th and the 14th, I mean the 13th, we look forward to seeing you there. Again, if there's anyone that wants to volunteer or make donations, please don't hesitate to call myself, Alderman Tillman, 708-891-8193, or 8194. And also, again, the 3rd and 4th Ward Meeting, Town Hall Meeting, will be the August 1st at 6:30 at Downey Park, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor. My office is currently planning another 5th Ward Veterans Resource Fair. If you're a veteran and you would like to attend this resource fair, please reach out to my office, 708-891-8195. Also, COVID is on the rise. My office still has hand sanitizer and face mask, KN95. If you are in need of mask or hand sanitizers, please contact my office. I will make sure that you get mask and hand sanitizer delivered to you properly, 708-891-8195. Last, and last but not least, my office is also partnering with the Lincoln Elementary School District. They're going to be hosting the Back to School Bash Saturday, August 13, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There's going to be food, games. There's gonna be food, games, lots of fun, free haircut vouchers, and so much more. So look forward to seeing you guys, if you're interested in volunteering, please reach out to my office at seven oh eight, eight nine one, eighty-one ninety-five. And also feel free to, we're in B one, fifth ward residents, so B one crime watch meetings are the first Monday of every month at the Police and Fire Training Facility, twenty-four East State Street. They start at five thirty. Feel free to go out to those crime watch meetings and share your concerns with the police. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you Alderman, Alderman Patton.
Thank you Mayor. This Saturday, July twenty-sixth, at nine AM, is our final coffee and conversation with the Alderman and your neighbors. It will be again at nine AM at Our Lady of Knock Church in the parking lot behind the old school. The first two this summer have been really well attended, and I want to thank all the residents that have come out so far to meet their neighbors, meet me, have any questions answered. I'd also like to thank the police chief and the fire chief for attending these, and when they're not able to attend, sending somebody else so that the residents have an opportunity to ask any police or fire-related questions to those individuals. Secondly, it appears that the hiccup with my city phone has been resolved finally, and the messages have been flooding in over the last couple of weeks, so I want to thank everybody for your patience during that time, as we were trying to go back through everything, you know, that had been kind of backlog, but I think we're up to date now on returning calls and submitting requests to the proper departments. So please continue to call my office with any issues, seven oh eight, eight nine one, eight one nine six. And finally, we have received a few questions about the street cleaning that's been going on, and the no parking signs that have been put out in the past. I think the no parking signs have had a day of the week on them, but I think what we have figured out is, if you see the no parking for street sweeping signs out, presume it's the next day that the no parking, the parking ban is in effect, because the Public Works has been really aggressive this year in getting our streets swept. I think I've seen the sweepers in my ward twice already this summer, so I want to thank Public Works for staying on that. And if you've got any other questions, please give my office a call, thanks.
Thank you Alderman. Alderman Smith.
Yes, thank you. Thank you Mayor. I just want to first and foremost remind the residents about the upcoming monthly seven four town hall meeting, every third Saturday, at twenty-four State Street, Public Safety, Calumet City Public Safety Training Center, from ten AM to noon. Refreshments will be provided. I'll be there, bring your questions, concerns, issues, comments, bring those there. Also, want to encourage the park residents to continue, as well as all the residents within the ward, to continue submitting any residential assistance requests under the CEC RAP program. Applications are on the Calumet City website. If you have any questions on that, please feel free to contact the office at seven zero eight, eight nine one, eighty-one ninety-seven. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman. Item eight, informational items, I would request a motion to deviate, to take up item eight C, as well as C two under resolutions, and also ask the clerk to read resolution C two. Is there a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Well, I'm sorry, second. Seconded by Alderman Gardner, motion made by Alderman Tillman. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, could you read?
A resolution expressing the City of Calumet City condolences in regard to the passing of Eileen Marie Patton. Whereas Eileen Marie Patton was born on March twenty-fifth, nineteen twenty-eight. To parents Lucille and Salvatore, how do you say that? Say it again?
Bogliano.
Bogliano. Whereas Eileen Marie Patton met James Daniel Patton in nineteen forty-three. They married after James Daniel Patton served in World War Two. They enjoyed seventy-two years of marriage until James Daniels Patton's untimely death in twenty twenty. Whereas Eileen Marie Patton was a longtime member of Sayburnaba Parish in Chicago, Illinois, and Saint Julie Parish in Tinley Park, Illinois. She was a member of CFM and CHRP. Whereas Eileen Marie Patton will be remembered for her love of the Lord, her great faith, as a prayer warrior for all, and for all, and her strong friendships. Whereas Eileen Marie Patton loved entertaining and spending time with family and friends. Her yearly Christmas celebration was a favorite. Whereas Eileen Marie Patton's love of travel took her from Vegas to Rome. Whereas Eileen Marie Patton was a devoted mother, a loving grandma, and an adored Gigi. Whereas Eileen Marie Patton passed away on July fourth, twenty twenty-two, at the age of ninety-four. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the City of Calumet City express their sincere condolences to the family of Eileen Marie Patton.
Thank you Clerk. Alderman, on behalf of the city council, we did express and send, on behalf of city council, to the services, so want to express our thoughts and prayers for you, but offer you any words that you want to say at this time.
Thank you Mayor, I just, you know, I'd like to thank you Mayor and my colleagues for this resolution. It's not something that I asked for and was caught by surprise when I saw on the agenda, I really appreciate it. You know, there's very few people that get to say that they live into their mid-thirties and have both of their grandparents with them, and as the resolution stated, my grandfather passed in a car accident two years ago, driving home from work at the age of ninety-two. And since then, my grandmother has been waiting for her day to join him again. She is, my cousins and I often joke that, you know, if our actions on this earth don't get us into heaven quite on our own, we'll be there on her coattails, because she is the most, you know, faithful, godly woman that I've ever met. You know, I am so lucky to have had her in my life, my children are lucky to have had her as their great-grandmother, their Gigi, as long as they did. And, you know, just thank you all for this resolution, I know it'll mean a lot to my family. It's been a hard couple of weeks for us, but there was no better time for my grandma to go than on the Fourth of July, as my grandfather retired from the Army after serving in World War Two as a general. So my cousins were joking at the wake that, you know, he was waiting until the Fourth of July, and he came down here with the flag and took her back with him. So thank you all for your condolences, and I'll be sure to pass this along to my family.
Thank you. At this time Alderman, if you would allow us, we would ask everyone to join us in the moment of silence, if you please stand.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to return to the regular order of business? Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Informational items eight A through G, does anyone have any questions for items eight A through G? Item eight D is the official posting of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three City of Calumet City appropriation budget. This posting is required by law to be posted. It's also required that the city have this available on the website, and also available in the clerk's office, and it will be available if any resident wants to come into the office and inspect the budget or needs a copy. That's item D. Is there a motion to approve information items eight A through G?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, and second by Alderman Monae Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item nine are new business items. New business items nine A, one through nineteen? Are there any questions about information items one through nineteen? If not, can someone make a motion, please, to approve new business items one through nineteen?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Gardner. Smith? Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you everyone. Item B are building permits. New fence, new garage, is there a motion? Alderman Navarrete and Alderman Wilson.
Motion to pass, items B one.
Motion to pass.
Motion made by Alderman Navarrete, second by Alderman Wilson, to approve item B, building permits. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Do I have to approve all? He just did B one. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, okay, okay.
Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes.
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 Under resolutions and ordinances, like to remove item three and item five, they will appear on the July twenty-eighth agenda. Like to entertain a motion for, to approve, resolution and ordinances one, two, and four.
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Patton. Smith? Alderman Smith?
Yeah, yes.
Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you everyone. Item D are financial matters, one through thirty-seven, I'm sorry. One through forty?
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions regarding financial matters one through forty? Not Alderman Gardner, would you make a motion? Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Tillman?
Williams.
Williams. I was looking at, second, motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Williams, to approve financial matters D one through forty. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you everyone. Under unfinished business, Alderman Smith, we'll start on your side.
Yes, just want to remind residents, continue to report any vacant or suspicious activities so that I can engage CCPD and get those, help get those issues addressed. Also, just want to remind the residents, please continue to attend the monthly town hall meetings. Great feedback, thank you.
Alderman Patton.
Thank you. I would just like to thank the residents, or probably more appropriately, the police department. It seems like this summer, for the first time in a long time, at least on the south end of town, the fireworks were contained mostly to the Fourth of July holiday, and not every night throughout the summer, nonstop. So whether that's the residents finally, you know, behaving and being neighborly, or the police stepping up, what they're doing to try and crack down on that, I just appreciate the silence throughout the summer. That's it, thank you.
I think we had less fireworks to do, pick up to after the Fourth, that... Alderman Gardner?
I think people didn't buy fireworks because they spend money on gas. That's all I got. Thank you all.
Alderman Williams?
Nothing Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tillman?
Nothing Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Wilson?
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to Val and her team with connecting us in the second ward with CMAP, to try to receive funding for a traffic study in our ward, which would look at making certain streets or blocks one-way with a directional going north. I know I spoke with Mr. Martin regarding some of the speeding that happens. If we can deter that by not having two-way streets in our ward, that will greatly help. Thank you also to Val, Jesse, Christina, Richard, for your help and diligence with the CREP applications for the second ward, which come in, they meet the qualifications, and when I'm called, I have all of the information to go ahead and approve them based on what was sent to me. Over the past few weeks, I have to thank Director Cheryl Tillman and her entire department and staff. When my residents see something and they say something, I call. And building and zoning, which we know as inspectional service, has been on top of every call, and I thank you. It is efficient service, which our residents deserve and crave, and thank you for giving that to them. Again, August thirteenth is the Health, Wellness, and Education Back to School Fair. Volunteers are needed throughout every ward participating. Letters of donation requests will come to everyone's email. Thank you in advance to those on council and the businesses in Calumet City that have already donated. Quick word, we have Woo Woo's Barbecue open. We visited them yesterday, they are in the strip mall at ten fifty Torrance. Please visit them, they are open. Gigi Sugarbar is open in the second ward. She has phenomenal funnels that are loaded, as well as other homemade treats. She makes homemade ice cream. Have a great weekend. July twentieth is my birthday, so for my barbecue people, if you just want to barbecue me a whole meal, I will accept it. Thank you, and bless the second ward.
Thank you Alderwoman. Alderman Navarrete?
Nothing this evening Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. There being no further business to come before the city council, is there a motion to adjourn at six forty-nine PM?
So move.
Motion made by Alderwoman Wilson, second by Alderman Williams, all in favor? Thank you everyone, meeting adjourned at six forty-nine PM.